What to do with the Hotel Marysville site? That's the discussion happening at 5:30 PM Thursday, September 25th, inside the newly painted Marysville City Hall and here on ubusutter.live, presented by Comfort Keepers of Ubesuter and Nevada Counties. During this Hotel Marysville Site Town Hall, you'll learn what's happening with the EPA Cleanup Grant Application and Debris Removal Process, and discussion of next steps for marketing the flattened Hotel Marysville property, how the city is identifying potential developers and revitalization opportunities. And you can speak up in a community input session where Marysville residents can share their ideas and priorities for the site. There's an open Q and A and discussion at the end. The Hotel Marysville Site Town Hall, presented by Comfort Keepers of Ubesuter and Nevada Counties. 5:30 PM Thursday, September 25th, live here at City Hall on ubusutter.live, Hotel Marysville Site Town Hall. A special presentation here on ubusutter.live.
ubusutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any requests for agenda reorganization? No? Okay, there's nothing to report out. Oh, actually, there's, sorry, there's one thing to report out from both session somewhere. The board voted, by a vote of seven to zero, to reject a claim presented and gave the authority to notify the claimant of this denial. And then student reports. Hello?
All right, hi. I'll start by saying we're very happy with how our student section's been this year. We've gotten a lot of participation. A lot of freshmen are in the student section a lot more. Obviously, the Mayor's Cup didn't go the way we wanted, but still happy with how the student section looked. And then we had our club rush about a month ago. We had over forty club signups, so we're happy again with how the, how many clubs signed up. And then our speech and debate team over the weekend did a great job. Four people made varsity. We have Ramanji Badwal and Ekemji Maynard went three and one, and Abdul Azizi in Guadalupe Sanavol went four and oh. And then we've come to a decision on our homecoming theme. It's gonna be Star Wars theme, and the dance is gonna be on October 25th, and the game will be on October 24th. And then for one last thing, I'd like to address our upcoming leadership field trip to the One Day Cata Conference in Woodland. On behalf, on behalf of my leadership class, we're very disappointed that our trip wasn't, or was approved and is now facing transportation challenges. It's a valuable opportunity for students to grow and develop their leadership skills through networking workshops and listening to a motivational speaker. At this time, the district has offered a bus, but due to scheduling constraints, it would result in students arriving about ninety minutes late and needing to leave thirty minutes early. It would significantly reduce the time that students can engage in the full experience that the conference has to offer. And not to mention, it would also be really rude to show up ninety minutes late and then leave thirty minutes early. Our leadership class is very disappointed, and we're requesting that the board and district personnel can come together to explore different options so that our forty-five students can attend this workshop.
Thank you. Can I ask you a quick question? It's for your train, for the Cata Conference, right? What is the hours for the actual conference? Do you have that? And if you don't, that's okay, bud.
I, I don't, but if you give me like five minutes, I can ask.
I think I have it.
I think it's eight thirty to two.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Eight forty-five. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Staff recognition.
Thank you. So, um. Jordan, I'm sorry. Well, I'm gonna just. So we're excited that we get to engage in this tradition and honoring our staff members as we start a new school year. We want to say good evening to our staff and our audience members. We're excited to recognize some exceptional district staff who help shape our culture of excellence. We know that staff recognition increases productivity, promotes employee retention, and encourages continuous improvement, all of which has a positive impact on our student outcomes and experience here, and helps YCOC achieve its mission statement and preparing the foundation for each student to build tomorrow's world. So with that, I would like to welcome, uh, I'm sorry, Rocco, Rocco Greco to the podium to honor his staff and Andrew Scarparros.
We do everything together at this point. So I'm gonna bring our four people up right now, and then we'll start to do it. So Raji, Francisco, Frank, and then of course, we couldn't be here without them.
Thank you very much and congratulations.
Thank you.
I have a question, I have a question. Can I ask you this question? So, just for the three, if it's okay, um.
I didn't cause the accident out for me.
Oh, okay, now I know, thanks.
It was not me.
No, because they always, they always explain, the administrators always explain the what you do, right, that you went above and beyond and how, and I love that. Like, but I'm always interested in why. And he can't answer that. Is, am I putting you on the spot? Because there's a reason why.
Well, for me, it's one of those things that I've been here quite a long time, and when you see the new staff come in, they don't know where to turn. And so I feel like, I always appreciated when there was someone there, Shauna Macy was there for me. And so I feel like, I, I owe them for her. I know many of you may not know Shauna, but she was a beautiful person. And so anyway, I do that because of, that's how she taught me. She was there for me and I feel like I should be there for others.
That's beautiful.
Very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For me, it's more of a, uh, I'm doing things for them that I wish I had when I was in high school or even elementary, uh, bringing those positive interactions with everybody and it just makes me happy. That's usually, that's why I do it, it makes me.
It's funny how that works, isn't it? When we pour into others, when we refresh others, we ourselves get refreshed.
Yes.
Uh, you don't have to say, because I know, I get it.
It's okay, I'm glad you went first, but um, you never know what a kid is going through. So I try to make it, um, a better day. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all of you.
Can I just say two things, like about all three of those teachers? I don't think, I, well, I know two of you guys have like seen me on campus at AK when I used to work there. Um, but each and every one of you guys are memorable in your own ways. And exactly what Mr. Greco had said, it truly embodies all three of you guys. Like your, your little lines, when you're walking, your little ones, you know, I'm always envious of them with their little backpacks, and when you're taking them from the lunchroom and you're, you're going on their little, they're like following on the lines, I remember that very vividly. But for them to follow your direction shows great leadership in your classroom. And that the kids respect you at such a young age, right? And that you have a loving relationship with them. And for Raji, I, I know Raji, and exactly what Mr. Greco had said about you two. For kids to go into a classroom during their lunchtime and want to spend time with an adult speaks volumes to their relationship and the environment that you create. And a lot of times, kids don't have that with anybody else. And so I see that with you. And with you, I know we've talked a couple of times, you know? But the one thing that I remember about you is always your smile. And your like loving and approachable nature. And you guys may not have known when I was like on campus that I sit in this seat, but I think it just like, I just want to express to you guys that these people do it day in, day out.
Yeah.
And it's not, I've had the privilege to be able to see you guys in action. And I'm just amazed. And so I, I appreciate Mr. Greco bringing those three individuals, because I see, I got firsthand experience of seeing people are great teachers that they are.
And thank you for bringing that today. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
And your little boy is adorable.
Yeah.
Yes, he can come to any meeting.
I'm still waiting for my parents.
Oh wait, what? But we're, but.
Mr. Greco.
Sorry, I'm totally kidding. Thank you for coming.
I've been waiting for my parents.
Wait, but the best, but all the fun.
Okay, I don't want a big one.
Thank you.
Just kidding, bye, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Berry School showcase.
Thank you, and so tonight we have Principal Ben Moss here to showcase the,
Emphasis on Change.
The work, um, Berry School.
My alma mater. To wear it.
The very best eighth grade promotion ceremony to attend, the very best.
You're too kind. Um, greetings, everyone, uh, my name is Ben Moss, I'm the principal of Berry Elementary. Uh, it's my privilege tonight to share with you, uh, many of the aspects of, uh, what Berry School is, what's going on there, and where we're headed, so. Up on the board there, we have, uh, our Keeping It Real slogan. And we try to promote respect, effort, attitude, and leadership in our students. And this is a common term around our school. Uh, we want to know our students keeping it real, and they let us know what they are and what they're doing. And we try to, uh, reward them with PBIS points and positive, uh, accolades for their efforts, and, um, we love catching kids in the act of doing good things. Uh, Berry School is the oldest school in our district, uh, established in eighteen sixty-one. Uh, it was just outside, near the Sutter Hawk Farm and, uh, pre-wild, wild west. Um, the school's been there, it was measured in rods and fok with thirteen gold coins, the land that it sits on. Um, our former superintendent tasked, uh, principals, uh, one year to, uh, give a history of their school, and mine was like a thesis project. Uh, it required some in-depth research, a lot of, uh, visits with, uh, community members who were retired out of our district. Um, going through some archive information, uh, with our paper and at City Hall. And I learned a lot about the school, and it's, uh, it's a great place to work. Uh, accolades that we have received as of recent, um, we were awarded this year the Silver PBIS Award. We also, uh, partnered with the Blue Zones Project to be, uh, a Blue Zones, uh, approved school, which, where we, uh, try to assist students in, uh, making healthy choices and trying to provide them, um, more accessible choices on campus when they are there. And, uh, our most recent one that we are very proud of was at the end of last school year, we received the Purple Star Award. Uh, it is for assisting military students who, uh, usually have, uh, high mobility, uh, where they are transferred from one base to another, could be at the start of the school year, mid-school year, end of the year, and trying to make the ease of transition, um, the, um, least challenging as possible. Uh, we are the first and only school in Southern County to have received that award. Our goals this year, uh, we are focusing on literacy, numeracy, our second language learners, and, uh, facilities and safety. We want to instill in our students a love of reading, um, and, uh, to get them to see the beauty of numeracy and how it connects to every aspect of life. We know that when we arrive at work, it's every student, every day. That literacy and numeracy are not subjects, they are life skills. Uh, from driving your vehicle, uh, from home to work, uh, from calculating a budget for the month, uh, to looking at buying a home or a car, um, all these things factor in. We assist students in, challenging them to read more frequently, uh, to provide, um, feedback by giving book reports, oral book reports, uh, to their peers and classes. And we know that these competencies that they need are critical at the TK, uh, eighth grade level. Trying to do intervention as students grow and develop bad habits or, um, ways to compensate for, uh, skills they don't have or very difficult to unlearn and learn the correct ones. Uh, interjected a few photos in here from some of our events at the school. The one at top, uh, is from our cultural night. We branched out, uh, our parent club to include a culture club, uh, to, um, raise awareness of the diversity on campus. And here we have some, uh, folkloric dancers and singers in the background. This is in our cafeteria, a small and tight, but, uh, very homey and, um, a very enjoyable evening. Uh, lower right corner is our annual career fair, uh, done, uh, with our Abbott elective students in sixth through eighth grade. We were challenged by our teachers to allow all students to attend this. And at first, I was reluctant to let some of the lower grades come, because I didn't think they would see the value in it. And I was proven wrong and, um, surprised at how interested young kids were in career opportunities and what they could be when they got older. So, um, they taught me a real big lesson that day. Lower left, uh, I want to thank Mr. Greco who left, uh, he and I, uh, did this mural project one weekend. He's quite an astute artist and, uh, taught me a lot that day, uh, of how to tag, uh, a school and do it well. We also focus, um, reading and writing as a culture, uh, on our campus. Uh, we want students doing this each and every day across all subjects. We encourage the thought process, uh, for putting their thoughts to paper, and there are opportunities to, um, share those thoughts with their classmates and their teachers. Here in the, the large picture, uh, last year, we challenged our ELAC students, uh, when they were taking the, uh, LPAC test to incorporate, uh, their Abbott strategies that they learned. We, um, uh, had twenty-one students re-designated, uh, out of the hundred and thirty that we had. And through attrition of our eighth grade, we are down to, I believe, ninety-three students now, in our, uh, second language, uh, program throughout the school. And these are students using those exact Abbott skills while they were taking that test, uh, very impressive. Uh, upper right is our, uh, ugly sweater run, uh, done in, uh, during PE, uh, near Christmas time. Uh, we invite, uh, families to, our parents who'd like to come down and grandparents to enjoy that day with us. Uh, very fun, and then, uh, lower right during our spirit week, we're reading to students in the classroom. They're, uh, got their sleeping bags and pajamas on. So demographics about our school. Uh, we have three hundred and thirty-four students in TK through five. We have two hundred and, uh, twenty-one now, uh, sixth through eighth graders, we picked up two more today. Our certificated staff is thirty-four and our classified staff is thirty-five, pretty, uh, equitable there. This is a, something I'd like to point out, that when I first arrived at Berry School, uh, sixteen years ago, our socio-economically disadvantaged students were roughly just about sixty percent. And that has grown twenty percent in about a decade and a half. And that's pretty significant, um, for a group of about six hundred kids. Kind of says something about what our families and our community are going through. Um, our students with IEPs were fifty-seven, students with five oh fours seventeen, uh, migrant ed students eighteen. There's our current ELD students, so a drop of, uh, thirty-seven from the previous year. Re-designate rate was seventeen point three percent of our students, um, and the state average is about fourteen point six three. So, uh, a big increase, uh, using some of the strategies that we help our students. Our electives, we have a hundred and thirty-eight sixth through eighth graders in Abbott's, uh, elective classes. Uh, our school is a school-wide Abbott program. Band, we have twenty-three students, an orchestra seventeen, choir twenty-two. Uh, this is out of the two hundred and twenty-one students that we have currently. Uh, our ASB leadership is at nineteen. Chorcore is a program that we have, uh, during our elective period where students can assist teachers, help out in other classrooms, help beautify the campus, assist at the office. Uh, we have twenty-eight students volunteering to do that. Our CJSF is at fifteen, and, um, let's kind of summarize our electives, uh, other than CTE. Uh, we do have one CTE course going right now. Now we have a photo of our, the large one is our choir group, uh, singing to the, uh, members who are family members and, uh, guests that we've had at that program. Uh, upper right, we have our annual winter program, uh, this is K through three. And lower right is our Veterans Day Assembly, where we invite, um, local, uh, military individuals to come to our campus, uh, to honor them and show our respect. Uh, here in the lower left, two photos, we have our hundredth day of school. Students, uh, dress up as if they are a hundred years old. And, uh, upper left, uh, we have a picture of a student who's done a leprechaun trap for St. Patrick's Day. And, uh, to our right, um, the second play that we have done in the, uh, time that I've been, uh, at campus is Alice in Wonderland, and we did that last year. It was a huge hit, and we had, uh, kids from, uh, almost every grade level other than TK, I believe. But we had Kinder through eighth grade in that. The only other play that we did before that was Annie, and, uh, we did that as a cooperative effort with our after-school program and, uh, some parental assistance, uh, in our cafeteria, and it was a big hit as well. Uh, we are looking forward to doing two plays this year, and, uh, excited to see that off and running.
That was in twenty seventeen.
Sorry?
Annie was in twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, been a while, yeah.
I, because I narrated it.
Oh, you did?
That's all I remember, I narrated.
It was a great play.
It was.
So, and our refinement, focus, and growth, uh, we're using several, um, initiatives at the school. Uh, UFLY, which is our University of Florida Literacy Institute Program, which, uh, is a very structured and excellent, um, program that teaches students the foundational skills, uh, for reading. Uh, as a school-wide Abbott, uh, we are, I think, knocking it apart. This is the most kids that we have had involved in Abbott in the entire time I've been at Berry. We have every one of our teachers trained in Abbott, except, uh, two new teachers that we got this year, and we'll be getting them trained, uh, this year. Our multi-tiers, uh, systems of support, we doing PBIS and our TI squared. We are seeing some, uh, great benefits from our, uh, behavioral academies that we started this year. Uh, we are working diligently to get kids to, um, grasp the concept and believe in growth mindset. I, I was a challenge learner, uh, when I was young in some areas. And I know that you begin to believe that, um, you can't do things. And it's, if you believe you can't, you, that's where you're at. It took a very kind teacher at, uh, Sac State to help me overcome, um, some weaknesses, uh, that I had so I could graduate, and, uh, I was very appreciative of that. We are currently doing data chats, or going to be getting data chats with, uh, students one-on-one as we've gone through our diagnostic. Our culture club, which has greatly increased our family engagement, uh, especially with families who, uh, struggle with the English language. Um, it's made them feel more connected to the school. In our after-school program, uh, we are pushing, uh, art and science, and we have a very nice garden club. Here we have our garden, we had an extensive and probably one of the largest gardens in Northern California. It was run by our science teacher there, uh, when we built the gym, we had to relocate it and rebuild it kind of from scratch, and now it is in our, uh, back forty, uh, the north end of the school. And, uh, we've grown pumpkins and sunflowers, and, um, our, our kids are very involved with that. Educational opportunities. So, to go along with, uh, the discussion about field trips earlier, we see those as a great opportunity for student growth beyond, uh, what we provide at the school. We, uh, would hope in the future that those opportunities can be expanded. For our updated facilities, uh, we are, uh, last year connected to city water. Uh, we still have operational well on site. We are getting, uh, our pumps replaced, and, uh, which is, um, currently slowing down the solar project status, uh, for Berry. Uh, we're, we're tentative, tentatively slated, uh, to have started, uh, this week in September. It's been moved to October, and we'll see if we'll continue with that date. Our grounds have suffered due to the, uh, water situation on campus. And, um, professional development, we have, um, encouraged all, uh, our staff to, um, make progress in the areas of, um, working with students and helping them, uh, grow. Uh, that includes our after-school program, uh, our instructional aides, our, um, teachers, as well as, um, our support staff on site. Question that was asked in there was how can the board and the district best support our school? Uh, continued support of, uh, repairs as needed for our facilities, um, for our staff, continued support of professional development for all staff. I think one of the things that we, uh, found a need, we were having difficulty, uh, we have the, uh, middle school emotionally supportive, uh, kids on campus, and they were having difficulty getting from point A to point B, uh, on the bus through transportation. And, uh, last year, um, we connected with, uh, transportation, and we had our vice principal, Mr. Robozzi, go over and, uh, train, uh, some of the bus drivers in de-escalation strategies, uh, so that, uh, they could feel more competent with interacting with students, uh, who face challenges. And, uh, for our community, uh, the continued recognition and embracing of our community and its richly diverse cultures. I moved up, uh, to the Uba City area from Sacramento, and, um, I have noticed a community of great giving, uh, a community that is very connected. A community that is very interested in all aspects of what is going on, um, within its community. It's, Uba City is a unique location. It is different from any place I have lived before. In the military, I lived in San Antonio, which was very much like Sacramento. And, um, moving up here, I've found it to be a very warm, inviting place. Before we go to the questions, uh, I did want to share with the board that, um, Berry School has been a great opportunity for me to grow as an educator and as a person. Our staff there, who were very veteran at the time of my arrival, uh, welcomed me with open arms and, um, were kind and supportive. And, uh, over the years, I've learned to return that favor to others. The two complaints I tell my staff are the only ones I'm going to hear is that our staff is too nice or kind, and that they are too helpful. Other than that, the other complaints, I don't think we should be getting, and we will address those when they arise. So, um, we do value your input, and I would love to field any questions that you guys may have.
So, first of all, thank you for putting all of this together, really.
My pleasure.
Really love it. And, um, and for the heart behind it. And I love, uh, literacy is near and dear to my heart as a, um, unapologetic book addict myself. And so I was just curious, I know you had mentioned some of the, um, some of the techniques or the strategies to get to your goal. As far as the book reports go and, and trying to engender that love of lit, of literacy and literature and reading. And, um, and I was just curious about, uh, two things. Knowing that, um, that, uh, well, the access to print materials, like not this, but like on old-fashioned paper.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
As it should be.
Right, so twenty-six separate studies, you know, undergird the fact that students not only learn deeper, but they're able to retain the information that they read when they interact with a paper book.
Right, yes.
Much longer, right? And I thank YouTube for all of the things I fixed in my house, but I, because of it, I, it has a great place. But how much of the literacy, as, as far as your, um, your promotion is paper versus screen?
So, uh, previously, our IT director, um, was an individual named James Lohman. And James and I, um, were completely at opposite ends of the spectrum on technology. I see technology as a tool, um, and in my opinion, I don't think kids should have computers in their hands until they're in middle school, at middle. I, um, I reflected, when I became a teacher and an educator, I reflected on who imparted, um, very positive, uh, and meaningful, uh, instruction to me when I was in school, and why, why was it positive? What did they do? How did they share that? I remember back to third grade in Sac City, I went to John Bidwell Elementary, and the teacher had us working with dictionaries in third grade. And we were, uh, alphabetized our spelling list and looked the words up.
Oh, I'm sure you loved it.
Uh, at first, I couldn't figure it out, but I found I learned a lot, uh, when reflecting on it. I learned about parts of speech, uh, pronunciation, uh, syllabation, um, antonyms, uh, just from working with a dictionary. And it was incumbent upon me to find those words within that dictionary. It wasn't given to me, I didn't ask someone to give it to me or ask a computer to, uh, just, and then boom, it was there. Uh, it required me to put some effort into it, and I've found that most things in life, when you put effort into them, have greater value.
Right, guess I'm just getting the game.
Yeah. And, uh, when I first arrived at Berry, um, our library was very old. Uh, in fact, we had no librarian at the time, um, and went after it with a little bit of zeal, uh, writing some grants to that, and I think, uh, Berry itself has, uh, just through grants and community, uh, support has probably invested over forty thousand dollars into our library, um, through, uh, community support.
That's fantastic, thank you, community. And the second part of my question is in, with regards to that, um, is that, um, statistics bear out that when students are read to out loud three ti, at least three times a week or more, they are twice as likely to land in the top twenty-five percent on their scores, their reading scores, just being read to out loud.
That's one of the things we try to teach students when taking tests, that, um, don't just take a test with your eyes. Uh, when you go to lift something, if I were to try to lift that table on my own, it would be a little challenging, awkward. Uh, it's not overly heavy, but just difficult. If I had two other individuals to assist me, it would be very easy to move around. And that's when we're learning to incorporate sound, speech, um, eye contact, all these things incorporated into how we process, uh, information in our brain. And it makes, uh, the ability to retain it and retrieve it much easier.
Right, so is that also part of your, like, it sounds like it's also part of your strategy, is making sure they're read to out loud frequently?
Read to, read with, um, we try to get students to vocal, once again, to vocalize, uh, their thoughts. Students are a little reluctant at first, they're shy, um, and that's normal. They're not sure if they're right or wrong, sometimes, they just think something, and, um, most students, most people are afraid to make a mistake. And that's one of the first great fears that you have to overcome.
Yeah.
Uh, to be alert, is to take those chances.
Absolutely.
And, um, it makes you a little braver and have a little courage, yeah.
And a little brighter, yeah. That's right, it's good, and, and on the, on the math component, they, um, on that, the, um, NCES said that when, also when you read frequently to a child, their math numbers, um, increase. So, it sounds like these two things are hand in hand.
They're connected, absolutely. Uh, a lot of math, uh, problems are word problems, and if you don't understand them or don't understand the concept or what exactly they're asking, I've seen students do, uh, correct work, but it wasn't what the question asked. but it wasn't what the question asked. So they'll come up with an answer that is incorrect, but all their math calculations are correct.
Right, that's good.
Try to give them credit, you know, encourage credit for that for trying. But yes, you want students to have a great vocabulary. And that comes through interaction with text, interaction with other subjects. I think having the opportunity to interact with print newspapers, magazines, comic books.
Yeah.
They were, I remember I was a big comic book reader as a sixth and seventh grader and learned a lot of things. And my mom was always wanting to tell me, if you don't know it, go look it up.
Right.
And, you know, she didn't want to give me the answer either, it's like, then, then she told me if I was right, mom, yeah.
That's good, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Hi, um, next report that we have is on advanced placement program.
Hi, I'd like to introduce Amy Murray, she's our assessment coordinator at the district office. Hope Alley, she's our AP coordinator at River Valley High School. And Kendra Moore, she's our AP coordinator at U of City High School to briefly talk about our advanced placement program at both high schools.
Thank you very much, Tina. Hi, good evening. I'm Amy Murray and I'm the coordinator of assessment and accountability in the educational services department. And I would like to introduce our two advanced placement coordinators that we have here. Oh, I'm so sorry, we have Kendra Moore here, who is our AP, sorry, we have Kendra Moore here from U of City High School. And we have Hope Alley, who is here from River Valley High School, and they are both the coordinators of their small sites. So tonight, we are going to update the board regarding the status of AP testing in YCU SD. And we'll start with a five-year overview of the data. And then we'll share out information about the AP program at both of our comprehensive high school sites. And then we'll conclude with some next steps for the future. Let's go ahead and start with some facts about the AP program. The AP program was established by the California Department of Education almost forty years ago. And today consists of both college level coursework and a testing program. And successful grades in AP courses and scores on AP tests can help students to gain college credits and also to compete in the selective process for college admissions. Here in YCU SD, we have a wide range of AP course offerings. Our newest courses, we added two years ago, are AP Calculus and AP Environmental Science. It is also worth noting that the College Board audits courses annually in order to maintain course quality and make sure that courses meet college level standards. And the College Board also conducts research into student performance on the tests. It also requires teachers to submit copies of their syllabus or to adopt College Board materials with review by college faculty in order to verify rigor for each of those subjects that's taught. Our AP tests are open to students in grades nine through twelve. Most of our students complete an AP test after taking AP coursework, although coursework is not a prerequisite. All of our high school students are eligible to take the test, including an option for students who are in homeschool or students who may opt to self-study. AP tests for YCU SD students are paid for by the district, ninety eight dollars per test and hosted every spring for the first three weeks in May at both River Valley and U of City High Schools. Most of the tests are two to three hours long, which gives you a sense of the rigor. And our site coordinators are essential for the entire process of organizing the tests at our schools for our students. Let's look now at some of the data for River Valley. This is a five-year overview of AP testing at RBHS from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five. Notice that the number of AP students has increased year over year. Last year, River Valley High School had two hundred and seventy four AP students and gave three hundred and forty AP exams. This means that some students took exams in more than one subject. And also note that almost sixty percent of students scored at the three plus level. Typically, a score of three plus or higher is eligible for college credit or placement. Note that River Valley High School had one hundred and sixty three students who achieved a three plus or higher score last year. It is also worth noting that YCU SD's local control and accountability or LCAP plan identifies that the percentage of students who pass AP exams who have scored three or higher is a key performance measure.
So just to clarify, anything less than a three is not eligible for college credit?
You know, I would have to double check on the college credit piece.
So I can, I can actually answer that question.
Thank you.
For, from my understanding is that not every school will actually take the three or above. Most schools in the state of California will. And then if it's below, below a three, they don't give college credit for the students. So they get college credit if they get three or higher for most schools, but there are some that don't.
So that would be, without that three on the AP test, it's just like taking any history class or any English class.
Any, exactly, yes.
They still get high school credit.
Yes.
But there was no need to submit yourself to the rigor.
Yeah, well, yes, and I know that colleges do look at whether or not you took an AP class versus a regular class. And I think for some colleges, it's actually is better to have the AP on your transcript.
Even if you didn't.
Well, and there, there are numerous studies that show just taking an AP class, even if you don't even take the AP exam, shows huge success in college later on.
Right, okay.
Kids don't flunk out of college as easily or.
Because they know what to expect.
It, yes, it's the rigor.
Right.
And and they also get a high, they get a, a great bump as well with the AP courses.
Okay.
I also like to add, they also get really great, um, they would get really great practice taking a paid test, right? So at, at least at River Valley, our admin students have to take a paid test. So an SAT, ACT, even the S back, right?
Right, right.
Or the CAS test, like, this is great practice for that, even if they don't pass, they're still rigorous.
Oh, don't get me started on that, that's right, don't say that, don't start there, but I got you the rest of it.
Can I stop that? I don't want to interrupt, but I have a question, are the state, you know, are the state colleges taking the AP as?
So most colleges do. I know that my students have told me in the past, because I was also an AP teacher for a while.
Right.
And so.
The state wasn't.
Yeah, so, so there's, it's weird because it's not consistent with which colleges accept the classes.
Right. Right.
And which colleges accept which.
Scores.
Score, yeah, the score, it, it.
I think the state colleges accepted it.
Yeah, so it depends, like, depends on the class.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's still weird.
Probably best to contact that college specifically if they have a question about specific school.
Yeah, I was curious, I was curious if it changed, yeah.
She could use papers.
Well, and this is a perfect segue, I'm going to go ahead and pass this up with you, Ms. Alley, so that she can talk about River Valley High School.
So this is my slide, so I'm just going to use my voice, okay? So on last year, we had physics one for the first time in twenty twenty five and they did amazing. The teacher was actually really Memphis and I sent him the scores, I was like, dude, you killed it. And so he was afraid we wouldn't have a course this year, but actually he got so many signed up. And so he's looking at a big classroom full of kids, really excited to be with him. It's Mr. Stewart, by the way, okay? And then AP precalculus is really popular, we have five sections, we have five sections this year. And so a lot of students going into AP precalculus, our biggest test. And so last year, it was, I want to say a hundred and three. And this year, this year in twenty twenty five, it was eighty one, so it's a lot. AP Environmental Science on its maiden voyage this year with an amazing teacher, she's super excited. And then I am exploring the adoption of AP Anatomy and Physiology. I'd like to pair it with our CNA program and also our Sports Med program. And then also cybersecurity, which is a big up and coming major all across colleges. And then AP Business with Personal Finance, I got the go-ahead today from the teacher, he was like, yeah, sure, I'll do that. And I was like, huh, I'm telling you, you know. And then I do want to say this to the board or to whoever's in charge is two teachers and one admin attended the Boston AP Annual Conference this summer. And last year, I attended with another teacher in Seattle. And the AP conference is not like any other conference, it's, it's fantastically just amazing. And so I just want to say thank you for sending people, I really appreciate that and the teachers really appreciate it. Well, never mind, not her.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go ahead and take a look at the U of City High School data over the past five years, looking at the numbers of students who are taking the test and passing with that three plus or higher. Take a moment to look at the chart and notice how the numbers have increased from twenty twenty one, from one hundred and twenty eight AP students in twenty one to two hundred and seven AP students in twenty twenty five.
So what do you attribute that change to?
Well, I think that that's a really good question.
I only ask good questions.
Yeah, yes, an excellent question, and I'm sure that there's probably a number of factors.
I think one of the factors, what Hope was mentioning, or Kendra mentioned, was we added the AP Calculus course into the mix. AP Precalculus course into the mix, and I think that kind of increased the number of sections for the students.
Okay. And also the, the scores went up. Yeah, as far as the number of percent of students with three plus.
Yeah, so we had about sixty four percent of the students who took the AP exam in twenty twenty five who earned a score of three plus. And I want to highlight that that's a really significant gain since twenty twenty one. We had only thirty five percent who were scoring at that three plus level. And so we're seeing year over year growth and scores are continuing to rise. So, and now, Ms. Kendra Moore, we'll talk about U of City High School highlights and our AP conference, like, from twenty one to twenty three.
So I do want to mention that in the last five years, so I, last time I was AP coordinator was nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, which was the fun year where we closed down that school year. And so that was the first year that they had online testing. And then the following year, they were still online and still I noticed that a lot of students who weren't enrolled in AP classes, and so I've seen that rise partly because of COVID.
That's a good point.
And partly because of not so.
Are they still online? Are the tests still online?
So the tests, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, most of them are online. And so they're trying to move to mostly online tests.
Inductably.
Because, you know, the students can type, the language test absolutely are, there's a verbal component that you have to write. And so, yeah, so all of them are, the only ones that are probably not, like, the math test will probably never be on all, online. And then, like, the physics test will probably never always be all online because of the formulas and so forth.
Right.
So, um, so we have three hundred and seventy three students currently enrolled in AP courses. We have seventy three students in AP Precalculus, we have three sections. And there are thirteen teachers that are teaching all of our classes. We have an enduring program, or enduring talk. I have to mention, since nineteen eighty nine, I asked some of the science teachers that actually went to high school at YC and one of whom remembered that when they were in high school in nineteen eighty nine, that they were offered AP classes in that year. So we've been having them for a long time. I do want to say one thing, thank you for paying for the AP exams. Because in two thousand nineteen, twenty, the students had to pay and there was lots of paperwork and lots of other stuff. So I just want to say thank you for paying for those.
I remember when I took the AP exam, I hated it, but I love, I took it in AP Spanish and.
Yeah, the language tests are.
Yeah, but I love math and so it'd be really cool to take AP cap, precap.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, encouraging me, I thought you were going to.
That's, they're precap and I did chemistry and I did.
I took mine online and I can guarantee you, I would never do that again. My, I, I remember typing it and it was like, if the wifi went down, if something went wrong, you could not restart it.
Yes, and and that's what we need, that support of the tech department and to make sure that everything is running smoothly and nicely and.
That's, that's why we need that, that all.
Um, because, yeah.
I'd rather take it on paper, I took one on paper, I took one on.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, and it depends on the test.
Earth, cast, sorry.
So the success of our AP program is of course a credit to our AP teachers. And this is why we're investing in professional development and ongoing training for the AP teachers at our sites. And this summer, we had a team of five teachers and administrators that we took to the annual AP conference in Boston. Keynotes from the conference in Boston emphasize the relationships between AP and industry and AP and CTE or Career Technical Education. And that in Career Kickstart is a CTE pathway that's associated with AP that we may explore. Key conference takeaways also focused on advancements in technology. And we can of course expect that our AP program will continue to evolve in the new AI era. And of course, it's most important to think about the impact of AP on our students. And I just recently had the opportunity to go to U of City High School and talk with our AP physics teacher, Mr. Gregory Johnson, and visit with some of the students and you can see what some of the students had to say about the AP class. And they're just really excited for the opportunity to be there. And I, I was really struck by how appreciative the students were and that they, they really recognize that this is a challenge, but it's a, it's a worthwhile one.
And before you move on, just real quick, I want to point out that Mr. Johnson actually has three or four, trying to remember, different AP courses. He teaches physics one, physics two, and then there's two computer science classes.
So next steps, what's next for the AP program at the state level and at YCU SD? Change is coming at the state level with the twenty twenty five dashboard, which will consider a student who completes an AP course with a grade of C minus or better as prepared for college or career. The old rule requires students to score a three or higher on at least two AP exams to be considered prepared. At the district level, embedding AP success in our LCAP signals the district's strategic commitment to academic excellence and equity. Our LCAP envisions the continued growth of the AP program in the future. Specifically, the LCAP focuses on access for some of our unduplicated students, which is addressed by providing funding for testing. And we will continue to monitor our students' scores with the goal that seventy percent of our test takers will earn a three plus by two thousand twenty six, two thousand twenty seven. We may also want to expand our course offerings. We will continue to support teachers by sending a team to the AP conference again this summer. AP can also complement our dual enrollment program by offering flexibility with course selection and direct transfer options. For example, you can use dual enrollment to take specific courses that count towards your chosen major and also take AP courses in the broader range of subjects that might not be available through dual enrollment. And while dual enrollment provides the ability to adapt to a college environment, taking AP courses shows the ability to be able to handle college level coursework. So for more information about AP, please refer to these websites. You can access score distribution information from last year to see how students perform across the United States and internationally. You can also learn more about the programs and its benefits to students and more information about the SAT and ACT testing, also available through the College Board. So thank you again so much to both of our AP coordinators, to Ms. Alley and Ms. Moore. And please let us know if there's any questions that we can offer. And thank you again to the board for your support.
So I was an AP Lit teacher for years, okay? I love AP courses, that's, it's my jam, okay? So dual enrollment has kind of scared me because I know, I know that a lot of AP courses are much more rigorous than a lot of the junior college courses are taking as dual enrollment.
Yes.
I know that for a fact. So my question has always been, how is AP going to continue if kids can take an easier way out by taking a college class where they're guaranteed college credit if they get a C? Where they will only get college credit if they get at least a three and that's if the college accepts it? So how, what are we doing to make sure that AP continues? Because it's so much better and so much more rigorous and the kids learn so much more from an AP course than they do from a junior college class.
You know, I, I think that a lot of the things that we're, that we, that we're doing now, like sending our teachers to our training, making sure that we have a robust, you know, selection of courses that are available, making sure that we're publicizing, you know, all the benefits of getting that rigorous and, you know, really college level preparation. You know, if you can pass your AP class, you know that when you're going to college, you're going to be able to handle the coursework.
Right.
And, you know, the experience of, the experience of being, you know, there on campus with AP, to be with your peers, taking this class together with your, with your cohort, you know, not being, then we're offering different pathways.
But courses that are offered through AP and the dual enrollment are actually different.
Yeah, so they, they offers, they offers.
Not all, not all of it, none of them.
Yeah, there are.
The different experience.
Right.
There, there are similar courses, but I think part of this, it's a coexisting. So how do they complement each other, how do they coexist together? Because you're going to have some kids who, you know, for example, we don't offer ASL in our curriculum currently. So there's going to be some kids who want to go and take a sign language course.
Right.
I think that's totally viable if the kid has an interest. So I think we have to find ways where they can coexist. And one way to do that is by expanding our AP offerings. So for example, she talked about anatomy and physiology and how that could be a side course to our CNA program. So I think there's some natural inroad with AP because they've actually increased.
Yeah, I see that, I'm very excited about that, because I was worried.
I, I will say, because you know me, Shelley, that I've taught AP stats for many years. We no longer offer. We no longer offer it at either Y C or R V because of the dual enrollment. I, we don't have enough students that sign up for it, so we'll not fly. Um, and so the kids are going to the college and it, it is, they've told me, it is easier than the class that I taught.
It's, it's one of those things, it's really hard to, it's really hard to.
It's, it's a bouncy act.
It's really hard to like indicate which way is the right way. I just think it's a, we want to give kids multiple options. And I think some kids are going to be more apt, like you said, with AP. Um, like for example, I was in Greg Johnson's class last week and what he's offering in his classes are phenomenal. So those kids, because of the teacher and because of the course, they're going to go to his class. But I think it's just giving them options, um, is really the important piece. And even at U of City High School, we have, um, Katie Woman, you know, she's an on-campus dual enrollment teacher. You know, she's teaching our kids on our campus and I think that's phenomenal. But at the same time, you know, we have, you know, we have other AP courses like AP Pre-Calc that we don't offer at the college. And those kids get that opportunity. So I think it's a, how do you, how do you, how do they coexist at the same time and complement each other?
Yes.
And I'm. Absolutely. And I'm also really heartened that our AP data, I mean, we are on the, we are just, we are just going up and up and up. I mean, I shouldn't say so.
Absolutely, I'm also really heartened that our AP.
I say we're trending up.
We're trying to keep yourself down.
We're trending up at AP.
Yeah, I apologize.
But thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And thank you for the work you guys do because it's.
Thank you, guys.
It's not easy.
Thank you.
Sweet. All right, comments for the public on items not on the agenda. We have one.
Not on the agenda?
Yeah.
The Brown Act specifically, Government Code Section five four nine, five four point two, provides that no action or discussion shall be taken on any item unless it is adequately described in a timely posted agenda. Accordingly, though the public may comment on matters within the Board's jurisdiction that do not appear on the agenda, the Board cannot respond to such comments without running the risk of deliberating or initiating discussion on topics not properly before the Board. Given the prohibition set forth in the Brown Act and the risk associated with responding to public comments, the Board does not respond to the community's questions or comments. The Board will respect the rights of the public to express their viewpoints on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. However, comments that are defamatory or violate the privacy rights of any students or individuals may not be protected by law. The Board shall not permit any disturbance or willful interruption of Board meetings.
Oh, Ms. Kans.
Hi. Hi, um, so I'm Trinity Kans. I'm the Avid Coordinator over at River Valley High School and this is my first year. I've been with Avid, um, since my second year of teaching at Lynnhurst High School and I've been teaching Avid now for eighteen years. And U of City, I came to U of City because my school at Marysville Joint Unified decided to drop the Avid program. So that's the sole reason I'm here. And we have grown in our Avid program. We saw that from, um, Ben Moss's presentation, that the middle school Avid program is growing. Traditionally, my ninth graders will go to U C Davis because we try to get them that hurrah, big school first. And then my sophomores will go to Sac State, my juniors will go to Chico State. Currently, because we have so many middle school students going to field trips as well, the students have already seen those three. They've been to Sac State, they've been to Chico State, they've been to U C Davis. And they might have been to some sprinkling of community colleges around, not U of, but around the local area up in Chico and down in Sacramento. Over the last couple of years, we've been told that two o'clock frame where you have to be back is not a real thing. And so they said, push for those field trips. And I said, okay, I'm excited. So I get my team ready and my freshmen are super excited to go to U C Merced, another close university that they could attend and has a really good, um, population and growing, um, community, along with C S U Stanislas. I got into denial just recently that basically told me that trip is too far out. And to maybe try for the third or the sixth, whenever students are not in session. That is hard for my high school students because they are the babysitters, because the parents are working on those days. I have not heard back from my tenth grade trip that is going to the Bay Area. But I find that if I got that response because it's too far out and we would not be back until five, I feel like I will get the same response. I also got a response from Tino and I understand we're trying to get the kids to maybe go to U N R because that's exciting. It is a college that a lot of our students go to, but again, it's too far out and not possible. I tried to get it brought to you guys for going across that ten mile state line. So I'm asking the Board and the District to look at creative solutions for this problem that is obviously not going to end anytime soon. Um, can we just do better? Because we are a very large unified school district, I found that out going to my C T A conference, that we are considered large. So is U C L A or, uh, L A U S D, but we are also large. And I want students to be able to see things that are more than forty minutes outside their hometown. So I'm just asking, can we find ways?
Thank you, thank you. Um. Consent agenda, um, I have a question on one item E, so if there's no other questions, there is a motion to approve with the exception of E.
I miss a motion to approve except for E.
Second.
On a motion by member Lynn, second by member Pretty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Um, I just have a question on the Rising Star's ed contract and I apologize, I should have brought this up earlier. Um, but I understand that this is for a student that's moving from one school, one N P S to another. Two things, when we're looking at the actual contract itself, um, it, the agreement terms, when you look at, geez, whoopsie. And I don't mean to like nitpick, I'm sorry, but on the first page, um, it talks about the school days. So like the regular minutes will be three hundred and fifteen and two hundred and forty during the extended school year. But then number two, when you add in the regular school year and then the twenty-two days of the extended school year, that equals two hundred and eleven. So that's not the same as the two forty above. And then when you look at number three, the estimated number of days is two hundred and three, which is not the same as number two or number one. And then my other question, when it comes to the rates, I know that the S O P A had put out like master, a master contract agreement. Um, my apologies, I don't, I don't have that part in front of me, but I just want to know if the rates that were handwritten in align with the negotiated master contractor rates that we have with Rising Star. Because they're just handwritten in and I apologize, I did not ask in advance, so I understand if there's, um, things. But I do know that when I attended S O P A, um, Ops Council meeting, the one thing that was brought up was like how many days that the Rising Star is putting into the contracts and that not aligning with the normal traditional school. And so if we are providing like traditional school days, which is a hundred and eighty, like all of, you know, our students, and then we're adding in additional days for E S Y, I just want to make sure that the numbers that are listed are adding up, right? And there's, it's just aligned.
Yeah, so, uh, internal staff filled this out, so I don't know about the number of days. And, um, I'm going to make an assumption, but we can verify that the, um, rates that are quoted here would be in alignment with those negotiated within the S O P A. But we would have to verify that because I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay, is this going to impact the student being placed in the N P S that's closer to us? Is this going to impact the date of them moving forward?
If we pause on this until we have the answer to that?
Yeah, I don't know that we can pause on this, uh, because we do need to, the student is not placed at the other non-public school.
So, so can I make then a motion that we align those dates to reflect the correct school year in addition to the appropriate E S Y? And also reflect the pre-negotiated master.
Yeah, and I'm going to make some assumptions that the numbers above are the actual school days, but the student was not coming in at the start. So I don't know if that's why the numbers are different, but that's some of the assumptions.
But the two forty that's listed is in excess of E S Y and.
Yeah, and some of the schools do, so some of our other students do run in excess of the number of days is because the, the, uh, N P S has run longer.
Okay.
But we can verify those dates as well and make sure that they're, um, accurate because I, I don't know.
Okay, so I mean.
Yeah.
Just one, did you make a motion?
So I, I don't mind making a motion that we approve the con- contract.
Well, wait, go.
Provided that, so that information that Jereen has shared is correct. Which is one, the negotiated, pre-negotiated rates. And then number two, that the days are correct, provided what, that's what's in the I E P. Is that a fair statement?
Mm-hmm.
And if it's not, then it can be brought back to the Board? Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion. Is that, is that?
It's already on the floor, so.
No, no, but we can still discuss, right? But is that?
And you can always amend it with the motion.
Is that clear?
It's clear to me.
Okay. Uh, is there any other comments?
I guess my question is, why are we paying beyond the number of days?
So, so some kids, E S Y is summer school, right? And there is a question on a student's I E P that talks about regression, right? And so if the student's disability impacts them in such a way where if they are not in school for an extended period of time, that they'll regress and it'll take longer for them to be able to recoup the information that they've lost, right?
Mm-hmm.
And if we answer that in, in affirmative, there's two worksheets that we actually have to go through as ed specialists. If we answer those questions in yes, they will regress and it negatively impacts them, then we have to offer them extended school year.
And so that's what the extended days are for?
Correct, but then Jereen is also bringing up that this is a unique situation. This student could be, like we have some others, that they're in those N P Ss beyond E S Y or maybe their E S Y might be longer. Um, their summer school might be a little bit longer than what our traditional, what we traditionally offer in Y C U S D.
Right, so the way I'm reading is that their normal school year is one eighty-nine, extended school year is twenty-two. And I believe the estimated s- number of days is because when I add that's two eleven and so he, he is not going to start at the start of the school year. So I think that's why the numbers are different. But again, some of the non-public schools do run longer. And so you'll see that up like a hundred and eighty and twenty, like we don't.
Hmm.
That's what I believe is, is the relative difference is here.
Okay.
But we can verify those numbers.
Perfect.
Yep.
That, that will be, that was the final.
So you have a motion on this side, I think.
I have a motion by me and then a second by member Pretty, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, verify this rate. Thank you very much. Um, oh, I was jumping way ahead. Four comments, um, a, uh, Rising Star's ed contract.
So this is, um, a little different because that previous one consent was for a revision based on a student who was previously at Cady. And this one's for two new students who will be, um, starting at Rising Star.
Well, not to be, um, contrary, but wasn't it the same L E A? Oh, oh, never mind. I'm looking at the case manager. I'm like, it's the same name, name. I have a question on this one. So is this a, is Rising Star a live-in facility?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Central gate.
It's our central gate or school that we turned into a, that they, is the N P S now. So Central Gate was our school that was closed down, I think, a year, so now it's a non-public school.
Okay.
But it's a closer proximity for us.
But we're not running it?
No.
Okay.
No.
But we're paying them to run it? We're paying Rising Star for these two students?
Yes. They lease our facilities and they provide, uh, a non-public school that we need non-public school services, so we intern. And it's not place our kids there. It's either, it's other.
Well, I, I get it. I, I understand. We didn't like, we didn't work in the contract that like, hey, we're, um, leasing this land to you or we're leasing this to you, but we get like free use of the facility?
No, they didn't.
No, there, there is actually some preferential language.
They negotiated that.
That's not. There is some preferential language in, in, in our contract.
Yeah, all right. I, okay, though my serious question is with regards to medical. Um, why are we, why are we paying for medical items for, um, one of these students? Things that should be, like with their parents involved, et cetera, et cetera. I'm looking at the, um, I'm looking at the individual coun- individual counseling. I mean, I mean, because you have counseling and guidance under five fifteen, which I see the amounts of time. I'm assuming that's like academic educational counseling, individual counseling. I know it's not psychological services, but is that a medical thing?
These are all educationally based services. They're not medical services.
So then why the difference between counseling and guidance and individual counseling? Why is that different? Why the distinction if it's not more of a medical thing?
So you mean in terms of the individual counseling? So individual counseling is, um, if students are meeting one-on-one with a, with a counselor.
And counseling and guidances?
I'm going to assume that's more on the academic side.
Academic side, yeah.
So then it.
But we would need to verify that.
So if individual counseling isn't academic, I guess my question is why are we? But you said, so.
Well, it's, so we're required by law to provide counseling support to students who need individual counseling. So you'll see those not only for students in non-public schools, but also within our own, our own, um, programs. So, um, it's not a medically based model in terms of counseling and therapy in the way it's on a medical side. This is based upon the need for students because of the social, social emotional needs to be academically and educationally successful. Those are the services that we provide within the educational setting.
Okay, but it's just educational counseling or the counseling that leads to educational success?
Educational. Yes.
Or not doing any of the like things that a therapist with parental approval and et cetera, that is H H S, that's.
This is an educationally based model, the helping with their social, whatever's the social emotional issues that are blocking them from being able to be educationally successful. So it's an educational model, it is not a medical model.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
For me, it's just the same questions that I had with the other, with the other group.
Okay, yeah. I will verify. I'm not sure whether, you know, there's the, there's, uh, days are different.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, definitely won't get that.
I can make a motion that we approve, um, pending verification. Verification of the number of days, so.
A second.
A motion by member Dami, second by member Ponfle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Um, B, M O U between P C O E and Y C S D for migrant ed services.
Uh, currently, um, we have a, at most of our schools, we have a number of, um, migrant students. We have a, there's a migrant education program around, I think, U of County Office of Ed. In addition to our school district, they work with a lot of school districts in this area, it's called Region Two. Um, some of the services they provide specifically are tutoring services for students, academic tutoring services for, um, English and math. Um, they provide college and career case management, parental support. Um, so currently they, we have a list of students, most of our migrant students are at A K, uh, U of City High School, Park Avenue Elementary School. And so this would be a one-year M O U with that County Office of Ed to support our migrant students in our district.
Any motion? Can you motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second, a motion by member Toseola, second on, by member Lamb, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. C, first reading of A R fifty-one twenty-seven.
Um, currently, we have, we do have more policy on graduation ceremonies and activities, um, but that more policy doesn't really delineate, um, specific actions, um, or expectations to participate in graduation ceremony or participate in a promotion ceremony at the middle schools. Uh, so this, I have a regulation, I would, um, I would ask the Board to consider, um, a approval of this, um, item so that we can actually start this whole year with this. Um, so what, the, the one change on this is where we're memorializing a practice we already do in our district. Um, we currently had a lower threshold for attendance to participate in graduation, so we'd like to increase that to eighty-five percent. So seniors have to participate in, they have to have an attendance of eighty-five percent all school year. It doesn't count school-sponsored activities, um, in order to participate in the graduation ceremony. It doesn't mean they don't get the diploma, it just means they can participate in graduation. And, um, we increased, we want to increase up to ninety percent for our middle school students. Um, because, um, ninety percent is the threshold that we have for chronic absenteeism, so it seems reasonable. So it's reasonable to be in line with what our chronic absenteeism rate is. Shall I?
Just a question, um, I was been on a graduation committee in the past and thought I still was, and did you guys have a meeting?
But we have not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this all came about from what?
Uh, principal input, so they've been, they have a, uh, our schools do have a practice that they do where um, parents can appeal a decision.
Right, believe me, I've sat on.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, so this is just memorializing that practice.
Right.
So in terms of the grad, it's not affecting the um, graduation course study.
Okay, so I have two comments on this. I think it's amazing, I like it, okay? Um, if you do have a grad committee meeting, I'd like to get informed.
Okay.
Um, so I I'm really interested in that. Um. I I'm gonna say this, but I I don't, I don't mean it to be demeaning it, but it may sound that way. Usually when parents come to um, appeal a decision that a student can't walk, um, very rarely does the district. Usually, um, there's a big cave-in and the kid walks anyway. So I just want to make sure, if we have this policy in place, that we start really upholding it. That, okay, you can come and tell me great Aunt Fanny is coming all the way from Timbuktu and she's on her deathbed and her last wish is to see Junior walk across the stage. Tough crap, Junior didn't do what he needed to do in order to walk across the stage. I would like to see it to have, I mean, if we're gonna vote on having this as a policy, I think we should make sure it has the teeth necessary to uphold it.
So Sean, I'm gonna give you some historical value on this one. So this A R actually was in place by the board.
Long time ago.
Long time ago, so it's still been in practice and so we uh, thought because of the concern regarding the attendance rates. But I'm also going to um, correct something that you said is because, trust me, I hear about it. I think the upholding of the policies has been very um, probably in effect and that the number of kids who are actually, the appeals are granted are ver- are fewer than have ever been, so.
Okay.
I I get that.
Well, and that might be more, because I haven't sat on an appeal committee for over five years, so.
Yeah. Appeal for, yeah. Yeah, and it is, I think.
But it was just a.
It it, and I do, and I know what you're talking about, and so I think we've um, really, and Tino gets the brunt of it and then I get to hear about it next and then they're in here trying to get to my office and and it's like the the decisions.
It's ugly.
Yeah, and it is, and I get it, and it's, but then there is an expectation that's been set by the board. They need, you need to do this and this ceremony is not a, the diploma's still granted. However, um, this is.
Ceremony's a privilege, not a right.
It is, it's not a right, and so we've been really clear about that.
Right.
And to that end, i- if you asked your, did you finish your question?
Mm-hmm.
To that end, I imagine that we have worked in some part of the process as a notification when they have start reaching certain thresholds, that there are stop gaps, yes.
Yes. Letters.
Yes.
Letters and meetings, letters and meetings.
Letters of loyalty, right?
Okay.
Well, I think they're, you're gonna, they're gonna sign a contract, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because they do that at the high schools.
Yes.
The one thing where it's gonna hit is when they leave for Christmas break. Those absences at Christmas break. The kids who take an extra two weeks or whatever at Christmas break, that's gonna be.
Sure. Yeah.
You're absolutely right, and I think this is why, and I'm gonna add, the the request would also be as if to waive the second reading because every, they would like to get this out and just.
Hundred percent, yeah, one hundred percent.
And everyone here over and over and over again, this is in place and this is the expectation.
Right. Right, there's just one thing I would add. Um, and I feel like it goes in line with um, with something you already have, but in the interest of total clarity, on both of these, it says, uh, it makes a um, a stipulation that again, that their behavior, uh, the students attending promotion ceremonies must attend rehearsals and must behave appropriately during rehearsals and at the promotion ceremony. So that's the same for eighth grade and twelfth grade.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to add um, that part of that behavior is also um, with regards to their dress. That they maintain the dress code. Whether it's in promotion. Because I imagine there is a dress code for promotion.
Yes.
And, oh, because there should be. And it is a solemn occasion and some uh, you know, and so like, but, and it's professional, it's educational. And um, it's not about, you know, my, some of the attire is inappropriate for the occasion. And so.
And I don't know, Tino, I haven't looked at the um, at it specifically, I think she's talking eighth grade because those high schools are.
They're covered, it's eighth grade.
Yeah. So I think it's a matter of, um, there was, I'm gonna talk about when my children went to bury a very strict dress code that wasn't enforced, and so I think it's that conversation back with our administrators and parents again, um, sometimes.
Well, I'm not saying what the dress code is, but whatever it is.
Right.
It's, it's like, you've got, well, and the other thing is like, you know, look, I um, might be approved. I will wear that happily. Um, but um, it, and and like, I've been to the high school graduations where like, they've got the caps and they decorated them and and there's like caps with profanity on it. And I'm like, that's not, that's not in line with the the professionalism, the honor, and I get it, for them, they're eighteen and they're just a kid. But it is um, you know, it's, it's, I I think it downplays the again, the the gravity of what you've accomplished by putting profanity or things that, you know, on your caps and and then in the eighth graders, when they're, you know, dressed in ways that
Well, I.
a- again, do not reflect the academic honor of and gravity of the behavior.
Well, I see what you're saying, like the strapless dresses, they can't wear strapless shirts just for during school, so you shouldn't be able to wear a strapless dress during graduation.
So back in the day was no, they couldn't wear strapless, it was for promotion, no strapless, no spaghetti straps, so it was really.
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah.
And it was kind of pounding into us as parents.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's revisiting the dress code and expectations of making promotion and then um, here's one, I'm sad to hear that there was profanity on ca- on the hats because that's one of the things they do talk about, that they're appropriate, you can decorate your cap, but it has to be appropriate, so there should not be any profanity.
Appropriate.
So that's, if you did, I saw something, I.
Yeah.
Reiterate that with our administrators.
Yeah.
I just um, again, I I didn't call them out, I didn't call the administrator out, I just noticed it and thought
Okay.
that was a poor reflection of that individual's hard work.
Right.
And I was like, it's too bad.
We can definitely address that with the
Mm-hmm.
administration, which is a very important ceremony in high school situations.
Yeah. Yeah.
So there's a request to waive second reading?
Yep.
So can I get a motion?
I make a motion we approve and waive second reading.
Wait, wave, wave first and then take the motion second.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that'd be too ridiculous.
Oh, there. What can I get a motion to waive the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by member Pretty, second by member Cora, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve? C?
Well, before we do that, will they put in the dress code part? Regardless of what the dress code is, behave appropriately and adhere to the dress code.
That's fine, you can add that language, that's what the board would like to see.
Yeah. Yeah, we can.
Yeah, so now.
Yes. Okay.
Can I get a, can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve with the amended dress code language.
Good.
Second.
A motion by member C O C O La, second by member Bonzle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Board reports information and discussion. I think there's a technology committee meeting thing that's coming up.
I got invited.
I did too.
I did too.
I did it all.
There you go.
Come on.
You see, you see, there you go.
Well, you know what, we appreciate you, I want to be there.
It's a goal.
When is it?
We're all gonna be there.
October eighth, from four to five thirty.
General deal D O at four.
Um, is that, is it a standalone or is that the first of many?
That's your second one, so it'll be probably a former after that.
Okay.
Cool.
And are they like monthly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. Um, I guess there's no other reports, uh, written communication from the public, I don't think there was any.
There is. There is one.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, um, employees representatives.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Mercedes Gerardo and I'm the um, chapter president of the of the California School Employees Association, chapter two sixty-five. And I don't have a lot on my list tonight, but I'm gonna start out with how much I know that reading is important. Remember Cecile, I never say her name, my dad.
It's fine, I rarely say it right myself.
Um, mention that and about reading to students, yet our elementary libraries, school libraries only have a three point seven five employee in there to read to students and that's kind of one of their jobs in there is to read to students. So we might want to look at those priorities a little bit, if reading to students is important, we should have somebody in our libraries to read to them, right? Um, that being said, um, I just want to take a moment to recognize that um, a longtime library personnel, Rosa Perez, a library tech, she was at U of City High School for many, many years. She was a library clerk, she was a parent liaison, she was, I don't know, you pick a job out of the classified status and she probably did it, but she retired this month. And um, I know it was a hard decision for her to make and um, but she um, did retire out of Berry School, so now that we have anybody can see that, then I'm sure they're in the process of filling, probably a transfer took it over, I don't know. But also, I'm gonna add to that as a mid-year retirement, is that um, I, through our labor management meetings, um, brought up an issue that I felt needed to be addressed and that's the fact that we recognize our retirees in May for the whole entire school year and our certificated staff almost exclusively retires at the end of the school year because that's contractual, right? They really can't retire mid-year, I don't know the rules, but I'm assuming they can't really retire mid-year unless there's a medical issue, things like that. But classified folks, we retire whenever it works out for our calendar and most of the time that's before December thirty-first because you have to wait a whole year to get your COLA in January through CalPERS and so if you retire before December or before January one, you're gonna get that COLA in a year. That being said, I brought it to uh, Jordan that let's, can we maybe recognize those mid-year retirees in a uh, celebration in January with the board? And um, I think that's gonna work out for us and so I appreciate that because we need to be able to recognize those people. As you know, many people retire and they move away. And if somebody retired in September, the chances of being around in May are a little slimmer and it's a little harder to get our classified folks there. So I do appreciate that effort to recognize those retirees. Might be one or two, might be quite a few, one day it's gonna be me, so watch out. That's my threat, my promise, whatever you want to take. Um, you know, one of my favorite things to stand up here and talk about is the C S A Pair Educator Conference that we've already got notifications, they're going to start taking um, registrations, I believe in December it opens, it will be March tenth through the twelfth. Um, early bird goes through Jan- mid-January and then the price goes up, so we want to take advantage of that if we can. Um, our job description task force is making great progress, we're almost done with our first family. We kind of grouped them together in ways that meant something. Some of them are kind of oddballs where it's like, okay, we'll just kind of put all these together. So our first group is almost completely done and um, with the job descriptions, they'll go through the negotiation team in case there's any ranges that need to change on them and that sort of thing. And then they'll come before the board after their six-ten, so I'm pretty excited that we're making movement on that. We have, most of our job descriptions are well over twenty years old. Um, and that's just too long for a job description. Nothing, nothing is the same as it was twenty years ago, so we need to make sure those are upcaged. So we're making a good hard effort to get that done. Um, another issue that came up, I heard a couple of times, um, is our bus drivers and and field trips. Well, I, it was reported to me that we had a bus driver orientation, new hire, well, not a new hire orientation, but come in and see what it's all about to see if they want to be trained by us and hopefully become one of our bus drivers. Um, my understanding, it was quite a large group, I think there was about thirty or so there. Um, thirty can easily trickle down to two, but two, one, anything is better than nothing. So I'm, I have hopes that maybe we won't trickle down as much. Pre-COVID days, we had, we were short-staffed at thirty-four bus drivers. We currently have twenty-eight bus drivers, which is inhibiting our ability to drive field trips and that sort of thing because we also have a lot of students that we have to get to school, be in the seats so that they can learn and be read to and, you know, graduate, promote, that sort of thing. So we're looking for for ways to bring more bus drivers to us so that we can provide services to the district everywhere, including our athletics, our field trips, that sort of thing. Um, let's see, lastly, just want to recognize another employee that we lost this month, uh, was Erica Lumber. She was uh, um, started out as campus supervisor at Riverbend School. She went on, I believe, to King Avenue to be a clerk and then ended up at Terre Boina as the office specialist. And um, our hearts go out to her family and to be with them. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trinity Counts. That's a different role. Hi, I'm Trinity Counts, I am the vice president of Y C T A um, association. So first I'd like to congratulate everybody from um, A K. I know those teachers, those are very hardworking teachers and I was really happy to see uh, Rocco uh, celebrate their warmth and how much they give just to the school itself and to the community of A K. I enjoy the monthly updates on the days I'm not here, um, and Heather is here, I am in the web world listening. And so I'm hoping that those monthly updates are bimonthly, I don't know how often they're happening, they seem to be monthly right now. Um, will help lead to more communication between the school's cohesiveness and camaraderie in our district so that we start recognize that we are a unified district. I also wonder if somehow we can get those presentations highlighted somewhere on the website because very few people know that you are highlighting each school unless that news has been leaked out or people actually read the board meeting packets, which isn't that many.
It don't just die for it?
No, I I had to show people where the board meeting agenda was during my avid meeting today.
Yes.
I'm like, it's right here. Um, I would like to thank Greg for attending our C T A dinner and I hope that next year more of us, including myself, will be able to attend that dinner. It was a great time in a small cohesive group, and I heard you missed it, so I'm sorry. Um, from the teacher, solar and parking still an issue, but we know it's an issue, so I'm just putting it out there that we still have that issue. The last board meeting, um, I listened to, I was a little sad as previous bargaining chair to hear that we are applying for a waiver for the third year in a row for not meeting that fifty-five percent threshold. Um, it worries me. Um, I heard the rationale and so I'm working with my bargaining team to look into those numbers to see with Kelly, our C T A rep, if those numbers actually are the reason why we're not hitting our bar. But it just looks not so good, three years in a row. Uh, kind of hurts me. Um, A P program, I was really excited. Um, my friend at colleague at River Valley went to the A P conference in Boston and she brought back to us the possibility of A P also being offered as a mid-semester test, which would be great for River Valley because our fall A P students have to wait four and a half months before they are tested on the material. And I've compared the scores and the scores don't look good. Like my spring kids do much better than my fall kids and I'm the same teacher, so there's not difference in that piece. But um, I look forward to that. I also echo the paying for the A P test because statistics have shown the students who take an A P test are more successful in their college work regardless of their score. So I just love the fact that our district pays for that test for our students. I just wish more students would take advantage of it. Um, October third is a student non-attendance day on the calendar, which I don't know if you're getting as many calls as I am about what do we do on this day? So I'm wondering if there's a different way we could label it other than student non-attendance day? Because my teachers are really confused on what to do. Because they didn't read the site plan, you know, that's their the works that year agreement that said this is what you could do on that day. Um, and October P D coming on the sixth, so it's really nice that those four days are a small respite for all of our teachers in this school year. I'm slightly jealous of the fact of my three executive board members that will be taking a week off next week and I will not be taking a week off, I will be pushing through. Yeah, pushing through. Um, but on note, that October P D, last year killed me. Um, three sessions is a lot for the brain, especially like not having a lot of time off before getting a whole bunch of P D. And so I had mentioned to Nick last year, like, can we do two sessions and then like they. And so I had mentioned to Nick last year, like, can we do two sessions and then like a cohesive group get together, everybody share kumbaya type of thing because I teach the three sessions too and I get tired too. Um, so yeah, in the next few weeks before our next, uh, board meeting, I just ask each of us to think about what one thing can we do better? And try to do better, 'cause that's my motto this year, how can I do one thing better? And I'd like to say happy second day of fall, even though it doesn't feel like fall. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's really.
I know, so are some of those.
Wouldn't it, how many people get the PD?
Ninety-nine. Ninety-nine.
I don't think.
Um, comments from board members?
PD.
Yes, I just wanna say thank you. Um, uh, Mercedes brings up the Para Educator Conference, and I love the culture of our district as a, um, as a constantly learning and constantly improving, and I think we've shown that we like, we, we, um, appreciate and send people to that, and would love the opportunity of making sure that when we do that we are giving new people
Yes.
every year the opportunity
Yes.
so that they can also bring back that and share that, um, with their team. I think that'd be very valuable
Yeah.
to ensure that that is, those are new.
I have something. I, um, couple weekends ago on Saturday, I participated in a fundraiser for River Valley Athletics, paddle for the paddle.
Battle for the paddle.
Battle for the paddle. It was so much fun.
To win.
First responders, so how much fun is that? You got firemen, EMT, policemen.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So cute, yes, that's why I went. I told my husband, 'cause he was a team, he goes, I'll be your team. I go, no, I got a girlfriend. We're going, you can stay home. But anyway, Gabe Ramirez and Tonya Culver put it on, it was amazing, it was so much fun. Um, and that was our first one, and it was just ran extremely well, and they took very good care of us, and it was a lot of fun.
Did you win?
You know what, there was twelve teams, and I think my ex-honker softball player friend that was my partner, um, we got sixth place. Yes. The firemen were nice and they played us very, you know, they weren't, they didn't try to kill us, but you know, it was fun, it was really fun.
I just wanted to make a comment about reading to students. When I was in the classroom, I read to my kids every day, and so did my other teachers, especially right after lunch. They're sweaty, they're hot, they come in, and they sit down, and it's a way to quiet them down. And I read to them every single day and as did my colleagues. And as to the librarian, he, I, they're only there for three and a half to four hours a day, but they are very busy checking books out and, uh, and also at, at Terre Bueina especially, it's, it was the computer lab and the library. So they're helping kids get onto the computers, 'cause the teacher's in there too, but, um, you know, but they were helping me do that, plus check out books. Um, they really, they really don't have time to read to kids, but we read to kids every day. I just wanted to do that.
And I always, I always put my.
I wanted you to know that I read to my kids every day.
I will do that. Well, I'm, listen, I always like say, I volunteer distributor when it comes to that, so I always appreciate those principals that reach out to me and have asked me to like, take, I'm, 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 so far, I've said yes to every one of those that have come.
Can I say one thing? Well, we're terribly into doing my kids when they're eighth graders, read to the kindergartners.
Yeah.
Every single Friday, and I, I remember my son doing it and my daughter doing it 'cause they both went to TV, and then the first graders would write him a letter when they graduated thanking them for being their reading partner. So I wish they did.
Reading buddies.
Reading buddies. I kind of wish some of the elementaries could possibly do that more. It just, and they would.
It wasn't just, it wasn't just eighth grade and first grade, it was, it was down to fifth graders. Fifth graders had reading buddies too in the, in the kindergarten and first grade.
Yeah. It's such a, it's so.
It's so awesome.
It is.
I was a, not to like go all like, you know, um, deep in the history, but I was a library assistant when I was in the fifth grade so that the librarian could do other things. I was the one shelving the books, and it was an honor because I like had a job and I got to go to the library during class and.
Mm-hmm.
You knew that Dewey Decimal System.
I did, and I do.
And that's how, I think that's the whole point of Chorcore at Berry, 'cause I, I did it in seventh grade and I would go help my first grade teacher,
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
and so I would be doing tasks for her, and I feel like that's something, I don't know if that schools do that too.
Some of them do, and they do have reading buddies still in seventh grade.
But I think that would just be super useful.
There's also a, it's almost like a, I mean, a national program that I've seen something about, it's called Grandma, Grandpa Readers.
Mm-hmm.
Where, you know, old retired folks
Come in and read.
come in and read.
Yes.
And my question on that is, if, um, if, if a, a, a grandpa or grandma wanted to go in and read to kids, do they need to be fingerprinted?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we do have our fingerprint pop process and policy.
Even if they're not alone with kids?
Is it a, I guess it's gonna be that, that's a good.
You know, I'm.
It depends on, it's, it's how long they are, it's how, it's how many days they come into the classroom, I think it's, isn't that it, Scott?
Jordan. The one-off. Yeah.
Jordan, isn't that it?
It is, it is both, if there's potential for them to not be under the direct instruction at some point of the teacher as well as the frequencies which they're accessing classrooms.
Okay, so, so it's a really great idea program, but some people may not want to, or may not, sometimes retirees aren't really fixed income, so they may not have the funds. Is there, is there a possibility that that should be something if we get an outreach to the community that we could, I don't know.
Take for their life scan?
Find, find some life scans, because even if we could.
Yeah, we do. So we do, we have two, two times a year where we fingerprint volunteers.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I don't, I've never seen that advertised.
Yeah.
Because everybody has to have their own. Nobody will take the other person's life scan.
I've never seen that advertised.
It's ridiculous.
The other thing that they can do is not just read to kids, but they can listen to kids read.
It's like me who doesn't want their life.
That's right, that's actually just as important.
Listen to like the first graders read, that's a really important job too.
All right, um, comments for us, you present it?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, I, we, well, we resent the committee list and what I wanted, and I shared in my Friday is that, um, some of those were specific to times and things going on in the district, and maybe time where you had mentioned, do we want to add to eliminate? Because some of them probably aren't relevant any longer. Um, but technology will be meaning, I do think there's maybe, has been conversation about grad committee. I don't know whether or not there's any intent, um, facilities committees, so I think it's just whether or not you want to continue with those committees or want to shift some of the focus. So probably tech is one that's going to be a.
And graduation one.
Yeah.
We have some stuff, that we can, we can do address.
But we don't have any curriculum committees right now or any upcoming?
Um, so the, there's meeting confer, meeting consult, that's, we, we meet with YCTA once a month, um, to consult over the curricular decisions.
There's a heat consult.
Oh, okay.
We just had that meeting last Thursday.
And government liaison continues.
Would it be appropriate to maybe add it on to like an agenda where we can maybe discuss like what's out there and then maybe give you guys like topic areas and you guys see if it's within our jurisdiction and or if there's something that you guys have already embedded that we can help support?
Absolutely.
If that, I don't, it's not supposed to be an action item, I don't think, but like, well, maybe, no, it's not. But there's something that maybe we can.
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. I'll, I'll put some stuff together and then we can have the conversation.
Cool.
And then, um, Monday, September twenty-ninth from two fifteen to four fifteen here in the district office. If you need a new staff badge updated for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, come on, let me get you big shaken.
At what time?
Uh, March, no, Monday, September twenty-ninth, nine a.m., two fifteen to four fifteen.
I've never used my badge for anything. What do y'all need your badges for?
It comes with a last week.
I wear them when I go to, when at the schools.
Yeah, when I go to schools.
Well.
Yeah, but I get one of the visitor stickers.
It's like, oh, I can't last week.
Two fifteen to.
Oh, I would, I, I never use the badge.
Four, four fifteen, four fifteen.
Is it someone's last week?
Is it twelve fifteen?
No, do we need a new badge?
Two fifteen.
About.
Two fifteen.
Not twelve.
Oh, I guess we're gonna see, had a two, two fifteen to four fifteen.
Oh, sorry, two fifteen.
It's late, we never really go this late, that's why.
Pictures.
Okay, anything else? Can I get a motion, oh, next board meeting's October fourteen, open session is at seven. Can I get a motion to return?
So good move. She won. Second.
Sorry, Lauren. Okay, on a motion by member pretty, second by member CO C Ola, all in favor?
We're not.
Yubasutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.